I'll call the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order for November 12, 2008. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. The council, there's nothing to report out as no actions were taken to report. However, the council did want to adjourn the closed session for a continued discussion on the item regarding the appointment of the city attorney. And the decision was to adjourn that to nine o'clock on November 20th.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Daigle, followed by the invocation by Rabbi Craig Lewis?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The source of blessing. As we set out to do the tasks before us, we offer thanks for your many blessings, never forgetting the sacrifices made by those who enable us to do our work. Thank you for the emergency personnel, police, fire, and medical, who risk their lives to protect others, and for all members of the military, whose sole purpose it is to guarantee our freedom. We are humbled by our debt to them, and we thank you for the providence granted through their deeds. Eternal source of life and wisdom, tonight as we gather, as many, we unite with one voice to serve one singular purpose: to ensure the health, prosperity, and welfare of our community. At this turning point in our nation's history with its struggles and with its hopes for the future, may our work, here and now, help bring assurance and comfort, first to the city of Newport Beach, and then help those feelings of security and well-being to spread. In this work, we hope for the patience to listen, the wisdom to advocate for truth, and the discernment to choose justly and rightly. May we always be humbled by the trust placed in us by the citizens and businesses of our city. May the greater good always take precedence over personal interest. And may it be that through the guidance of this legislative body, our city may exemplify the ideals of peace among neighbors, security in our streets, and justice for all. Source of goodness for the opportunity to serve and to help spread goodness within our borders, we give our thanks to you. And let us all say together, amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Well, the first item on our agenda this evening is presentations. And we have one very special presentation to give this evening to our retiring city clerk, Levon Harkless. Levon, would you like to come forward, please? Before I read the proclamation, I'd just like to say a few words mainly because I know that the rest of the council is going to have a lot of accolades to give you. And if I don't say something now, I may not get a chance to say anything. But, you know, it really is, I think for all of us, it's a joyful day and a sad day. It's sad that we're going to lose you. I know that I've worked with you for 13 years now, and I just can't tell you how much I admire the work you've done, your organization skills. I wish I was half as organized as you are. And just the precision, the efficiency around the city clerk's office. You kept us all out of trouble up here by reminding us on due dates that we had to do things. And the service you have provided the city staff as well as the city council has been exemplary. You've certainly left your office in the best of shape. The testament to that is the fact that we have hired your assistant, Levon, or Leilani, to replace you. And I think that's certainly a tribute to, you know, how you've run your office and trained your personnel. But even though that's sad, it's really a joyful day for you because you get to go retire up in South Dakota, in that beautiful home you built up there, and, you know, really have a nice retirement. And if I can prevail on the rest of the council to rearrange our August meeting schedule a little bit, I just might be rolling up there on my motorcycle when the Sturgis Bike Week is next summer. So we'll see if they'll cooperate on that. But I'm going to miss you personally. I believe the rest of the council will. Also, you've certainly been an exemplary city clerk and set the highest standards for our city. And I really appreciate it. It's really been an honor and a pleasure for me to work with you.
Thank you, Ed.
And so I'd like to read this proclamation. Okay, this is a proclamation of the city of Newport Beach. Whereas Levon M. Harkless began her career as the city clerk of the city of Newport Beach in January 1996, and she was instrumental in introducing the city to document imaging, providing online access to city records that date back to 1906, and spearheaded the retention schedule process. And she received her certified municipal clerk CMC designation in March 1991, and master municipal clerk MMC designation in July 2004 from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And she has conducted nine general municipal elections and special elections, which encompassed nine measures and 26 council seats. And that equates to 59 council candidates. And she has gallantly conducted the process of four council vacancies. And she has worked with two city attorneys, two city managers, survived 13 mayors, and 20 council members. Most importantly, stayed awake through almost 500 city council and other public meetings during her career with the city of Newport Beach. And she has served the city of Newport Beach and its citizens in an exemplary manner with distinction and in the highest standards of the city of Newport Beach. And whereas Levon M. Harkless will complete her dedicated service with the city of Newport Beach on November 17, 2008. And Levon, her husband Gary, and their cat Lucy will then pack up their motorhome and relocate from sunny Newport Beach to four-season South Dakota, which I think just had 45 inches of snow if I'm not mistaken, to live in their beautiful log cabin home atop a lush green or sometimes snowy hill amongst the buffalo, deer, squirrels, pheasants, turkeys, and mountain lions. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim that the following special recognition be given to Levon M. Harkless, commendation for a career of outstanding service for almost 13 years of meritorious service to the community as the 13th city clerk of the city of Newport Beach, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed this 12th day of November. Edward Selich, Mayor.
That looks very nice. Ready? One, two, three. Let me just do one more. I'm trying to get Dave's things on. All right, here we go. One, two, three.
First of all, never did I ever think I would be old enough to retire. After working 37 years, it's time. And after listening to all of these facts in this proclamation, now I know I am tired and I am ready for retirement. I want to thank each and every one of you for the support you've given me over the last 13 years, or whatever your tenure has been on council. It has been truly my honor and privilege to be your city clerk and to work with you during these last 13 years. Newport Beach is a very fine city, and it will always be very near and dear to my heart. I've had great staff. I've had a great management team to work with. I'd like to say that you're the best council I've ever worked with, but in all reality and being totally honest, each and every council member that I've worked with over the last 13 years has played an important role in getting this city to the place that it is today, as individuals, as groups. You know, I know every December when it comes around time for the annual rotation of the mayor, you know, we're going, oh, no, I just want that same mayor to be there year after year after year. But it always surprises me how the next person that steps up, you know, just falls right into place and handles it very well. So again, I just want to thank each and every one of you. It's certainly been an honor and a privilege to serve you and to serve this city. Thank you.
Counselor, Councilman Webb.
Well, Levon, I'm one that has worked with you on both sides as a staff member and council member, and really truly know in all of the wonderful things you've done, like particularly in the Centennial when I was the Centennial mayor and trying to look up things for the Centennial. I didn't have to come down and pull all those books off the shelf, the 1906 minute books. And I could go home, I could do it at home on the computer. And thank you for saving that time. But it really truly has been a wonderful experience for me to work with you over all of these years. And thank you for the time you put in. And after last week, having been in Kansas, I think I mentioned today, and drove over 1,000 miles, and I only went through one town that had a population of over 10,000. And I picture South Dakota sort of being like that. And you have a wonderful experience, and I don't think you'd have many people to bother you. And I think you're going to enjoy it. So thank you for giving us your time.
Councilman Hen?
We can send you a few people to bother you if you'd like. Whether or not we're the best council you've ever worked with, you're the best city clerk I've ever worked with. And I just wanted to add my personal thanks only for the short two years that I've been on council. Every time I've had a question that you've answered, whether or not it's been the answer I would have wanted to get, it was the right answer and objective and very professionally delivered. And I always respected and appreciated you for that. And so good luck on your retirement for a long, long, happy time in South Dakota.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes, certainly. In addition to recording over 530 minutes, it was all the work putting together those agendas, and I'm sure it was just enormous amount of work. So thank you. And mentioned too, the alphabet soup of ballot measures that we've had in our community over the years. And I know that some of the things have been really great about you is that you've also been very accessible to the community. You know, people that were involved with those always felt they could go to you and get counsel. So thank you for the manner in which you administered your office with a lot of fairness. And good luck up north.
Councilman Curry?
Well, Levon, I would just add my congratulations too for what a great job. I mean, the public really doesn't see all that you do to make us look good up here, but it's a tremendous amount. And the fact that you can go on the website and really track down through the entire city's history is really a tribute to you and to the organization of your office and how you have really helped make Newport Beach a special city. We're going to miss you very much, and we wish you all the best in South Dakota.
Counselor Rosansky?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much to add to all that except that I don't think I'm losing a good city clerk. I'm losing a good friend, and hopefully we'll see you back. Do I have to go when there's 45 inches of snow in the ground?
Yeah, right. You can be sure that I won't be visiting.
Are there any mosquitoes there, Levon?
No, I'm just not a, I'm a California-type person, Southern California particularly. But I do, as a new council person, you made me feel like I knew something right away, and it was just so helpful. And every time I've called the office, it's always been an answer immediately. So thank you so much. And do enjoy the snow, and do enjoy all those insects that are in the summer. And really live it up in spring and fall because I bet those are gorgeous.
Thank you, Levon. We will miss you. Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Counselwoman Gardner?
Yes, I'd like a report from General Services, brief on what it's cost in terms of hours and dollars to get the campaign signs out of public areas that we don't want them in.
Counselman Curry?
Well, I would, this is, we're in tough economic times, but I would note one of the things about tough economic times is that the volume at John Wayne Airport is down by nearly three-quarters of a million people this year so far, about a little over 10 percent, which is translating into fewer flights over Newport Beach. And so while we all want the economy to get better, I think we should just stop and note that one of the things at least happening is that air traffic over the city has been declining.
Counselman Webb?
I have none.
Counselman Hen?
No, other than to add to Counselman Curry, that gas prices are down too. I have no other announcements.
Counselor Rosansky?
None for me, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Uh, none.
And I have none. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 14 and item S-18 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Counselman Hen?
I'd like to pull item 12, please.
Counselor Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Uh, four, please.
Number four. Counselwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Counselman Curry?
Nothing.
Counselman Webb?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Staff, do you have anything to pull?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar, number nine. I'd like to understand why we're doing it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 14, S-18. We'll be pulling items 4, 9, and 12.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. First item pulled is item number four, interim funding reimbursement authorization for the Oasis Senior Center and Sunset Ridge Park. You pulled that one. Oh, you did.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor has some questions for the finance director.
I know there's been a lot of interest as far as, you know, how much money we're going to be borrowing and when and all of that. And in terms of this resolution, can you explain what this resolution will be for?
Yeah, actually, there are two resolutions you're adopting tonight. They're termed reimbursement resolutions. One's for the Oasis Senior Center, and the second one is for Sunset Ridge Park. And the sole intent of these two resolutions is to allow this council the opportunity to reimburse itself for any capital expenditures for those two projects if and when any debt is issued for those projects. Neither one of these resolutions authorize any debt issuance if that ever comes up, if the council decides to proceed with that. It'd require public hearings, public notices, bond documents, et cetera. And so I want to make it clear that all these two resolutions do is allow the council the option of reimbursing itself at some future date.
Okay. And then in terms of kind of getting your ducks in the row, or getting ducks in the row for finance from Wall Street, kind of what you're doing now is preparing all that paperwork, which takes time and can become a very elaborate eye to dot and a very elaborate T to cross. So can you kind of explain a little bit about that process?
Sure. The Finance Committee met, I think, a week ago, and we talked about this very item. The direction was is to ask our bond counsel, our financial consultants, our underwriters to be prepared that if and when the council so chooses to issue debt, and if and when the market is favorable to do so, that we'll be ready to go. But again, it does not obligate the council to do anything at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does, any other questions?
Actually, I have one because maybe it's a simple answer. It just came to mind, though. I mean, Oasis is going to be starting after the first of the year here. So when are we going to be seeing that, or decision being made as to how we're going to finance that? Is that being discussed in Finance Committee, or?
Well, it is being discussed in Finance Committee, and the idea would be that, you know, you don't know the amount of the bonds until you get the bids back. At that point in time, you would look at the market conditions and see if it was advantageous to borrow money. There's been a lot of volatility in interest rates. The reason why we're doing these resolutions is so that if interest rates are at a point in time where we would not want to issue debt at that particular time, we can use our reserves and then reimburse ourselves some reserves by issuing the bonds two or three or four months later, if and when market conditions improve. That's the sort of the thinking here. But we'll be ready to go into the market, I would expect, right after the first of the year.
I guess, just to my question, or maybe, I think that presupposes that we will be borrowing money for Oasis. And I personally would like to have a discussion as to whether or not we will be borrowing money, period, for Oasis. Because we do have significant reserves now that we could use and basically pay our $10 million share of the city's share of it. So I think that's an important discussion to have at some point, and not wait till the last minute to do that. So I guess if we're asking for matters to be discussed, I waived my right earlier. I'll take that back and say I would like to have a discussion as to how we plan on financing that structure, whether it is, you know, COP financing, or reserves, or some combination. I'm assuming that the Finance Committee's been having these discussions and that there will be some kind of a recommendation or something coming from them, but.
Thank you. Anyone from the public want to comment on this item?
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I thank you for pulling it. I think it's certainly appropriate. It's a rather large expenditure, and I think a little bit more than we had planned on for Oasis. You're doing quite a bit, and I'm not sure that we need it all, but that's another aspect. The other thing is that the second agenda item on this, or second part of it, was $15 million for Sunset Ridge Park. And these two add up to $25 million or so. And it seems that it's certainly worthwhile having as a regular agenda item so that it definitely gets explanation, which we had, and then everybody understands what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Anyone else? Okay, saying no, and I'll bring it back to council for motion.
Make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item that was pulled was item number nine, MacArthur Boulevard median trees, award of contract. Mr. Nichols?
Again, Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I have to admit, I don't understand this one as well as I should, and I would like to find out a little bit about it. I don't see any reason why we need trees down MacArthur. And certainly, if they're in the wrong spots, it's going to cut some of the view. Now, maybe it's a view backwards that you're looking through when you're going up the hill on your right lane. But nevertheless, most four-lane divided highways, like MacArthur is, or six-lane, do not have trees down it. And I just, we haven't had a wonderful success with this. They do cut down view. We have had some terrible crashes, high-speed crashes, of somebody walking across the intersection and getting hit. I'm just, I'd like to question whether this is a good idea, and the explanation for it.
Okay, Mr. Batum? You want to explain exactly where the trees are going to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this project includes 121 liquid amber trees, very similar to what is already on Jamboree Road and what was recently planted on San Joaquin. From, and this is a segment of MacArthur, from San Joaquin Hills Road to Ford Road or beneath a canyon. That's the area that I guess kind of dips down. There really isn't any view impacts associated with this. It's kind of in that area. It's a little bit of a cut. So the roadway is quite a bit distance lower than most of the homes that are adjacent. So I don't believe there's a view issue here. And as to the traffic safety issues, again, this roadway is really no different than any of our other archerials in the city where we have very similar trees. In fact, as I mentioned, Jamboree and San Joaquin Hills Road also have these trees as well.
Okay. And this was also a budgeted item that was requested by the Big Canyon Association?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, saying no, and I'll bring it back for motion.
Motion carries.
Okay, the last item pulled was item number 12. This is revision of council policy F2, reserve designations of fund balance. Counselman Hen?
Yes, at the last council meeting, we had a presentation on the investments that the city is responsible for, totaling many tens of millions of dollars. And I can tell you, although I wasn't at the meeting, Dennis, I did look through the underlying investments, every one of them, in that detailed report that you sent us. And I'm very pleased that our investments are in such good hands and in such conservative instruments that we really have virtually no exposure despite the turbulent times that we're in. Of course, these investments that we were talking about are in fact investments in large part of the reserves that the city holds. And the city holds very substantial reserves in the tens of millions, probably 50 or 60 of which is not specifically required for a dedicated purpose. And this provides for a tremendous cushion for the city in the event of economic downturn and adversity. But these reserves have to be structured in a correct and careful way. And so while the subject matter of item number 12 is a bit arcane about how to structure the reserve requirements for our internal service reserves, it's nonetheless important. And getting back to just a minute ago, the discussion about underwriting and the city's potential need to be borrowing money, it's also essential that our reserves be properly stated in terms of the policies that govern them, and that we are in compliance with our own policies on our reserves. Those are all very important things when you go to see a rating agency to get a very high rating. And so I thought it might be useful to take just a minute and ask Dennis to speak a little bit further about these internal service reserves. And then I do have a couple of suggested small amendments to the policy here before we finish.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm back. What, I think what Councilmember Hannah is referring to is that we've had many discussions at the Finance Committee level once again about the proper level of reserves for the city, specifically, was before you tonight, in our internal service.
city, specifically, was before you tonight, in our internal service funds. We originally, and what it's going to require, if you look at page four of the staff report, there's a chart on there that says to fully fund these internal service funds per the new policy that you'll be adopting tonight will require a transfer of $5.9 million from the general fund. It was originally anticipated that that transfer would come from, in large part, from our $5 million pers reserve that we've held for many years. As it turned out, we're in the process of closing our books for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2008. Our auditors are here now auditing our financial statements. We were able to make this transfer, the $5.9 million, from appropriation, general fund appropriation reserves and operating surplus without touching the pers reserve. So if you approve this this evening, we'll be in full compliance with all the reserve policies, general fund, our internal service funds, et cetera. And that's why we're recommending that you approve this document, this policy, and the fund transfer.
And Dennis, would you say we're a bit unique, that we've established this full range of policies for equipment replacement and whatnot, in terms of the cities that you've surveyed?
Absolutely. A lot of cities, let me go back in history a little bit. When I first got here in 1990, we had no internal service funds. We didn't have any insurance reserve fund, equipment maintenance fund, compensated absences fund. None of those existed. Those things were all funded out of the general fund. And as you know, when you have a lawsuit or a major equipment purchase, it would cause spikes in our general fund operating budget. So we determined early on that these should be in internal service funds, where we charge rates against our departments, and that level funds these large purchases over time, so you don't see the spikes. A lot of cities do not use internal service funds, or at least to the extent that we do. So I think we are a little unique in that regard.
Thank you. With the council's indulgence, I did want to recommend two small enhancements to the policy here. On page 14, top of page 15, which would be policy 3B, just to add at the end of the paragraph at the top of page 15, that transfer amounts in excess of $500,000 would require notice to council at the first council meeting following such transfer. And then at the carryover paragraph at the top of page 16, which is council policy 4B, to add the similar language at the end of that paragraph that says, "At the first council meeting following such action." And the only reason for that enhancement is that these would be transfers of a fairly material amount of money, and we just want to make sure that council is advised of that as promptly as possible, to be sure council understands the reasons behind the need for such a transfer, and has the chance to evaluate whether that implies any other actions that council ought to take to avoid needs like that in the future. So with those two changes, I would move that we adopt this.
Okay. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seen no one, I'll bring it back for motion. Or I guess we have a motion to vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our consent calendar items. Next item is oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, we have continued to meet on our green task force and have created a subcommittee, which will be working on the ordinance with Jay Albatar, our building director. And a second aspect of it is communication we've been working on, and we're going to work with Mary Lee Jackson to create a half-hour program on green practices that can be distributed for Channel 3, and also used for homeowners associations and other groups that might be interested.
Councilman Curry?
No report.
Okay, Councilman what? Councilman Hen?
Yes, I'd like to report on some progress in association with the Ad Hoc Committee on group homes. The city continues to make excellent and very tangible progress in addressing this problem on behalf of our residents. I'd like to particularly thank our staff, including Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager, and Robin, our City Attorney, as well as planning department staff in addressing this so vigorously. For example, in the very recent, last couple of weeks, I guess, we scored another very thorough court victory in the Pacific Shores litigation, where the court uniformly denied the plaintiff's allegation that our ordinance, Group Home 2008-05, was facially discriminatory. That litigation will continue, but it will continue on the basis of allegations that will be probably even more difficult for the plaintiff to sustain. Secondly, and, well, the significance of that victory is that our ordinance stays in effect and stays active and enforceable, as it is presently constituted. And then, secondly, we had a major development that I believe will also be to the benefit of our residents here in the city. A company called Narcanon has operated for many years, a group home rehabilitation facility on, at 1810 West Oceanfront. And the city has recently been able to reach agreement with Narcanon and its parent organization to close that facility entirely, as of February of 2010. That facility had the capacity to deal with 49 individuals. It was the largest single facility in the city of Newport Beach, and it is in a particular area where there is a large over-concentration of group rehabilitation homes. Our ability to reach this agreement through negotiation will assure that it will, in fact, happen as contractually required by February of 2010. And in the meantime, our agreement also sets, for the first time, strict operating standards that will be applicable to that facility. Our residents have already pointed out to us some things that they thought maybe are not being observed in accordance with the new agreement, which, by the way, is now posted on the city's website for anyone to look at. And our code enforcement people are already following up on those questions. So this is a major, major benefit, I believe, for the citizens, especially of the central peninsula area. And then, in addition to that, I wanted to make sure everyone knew that the Sober Living by the Sea agreement will be going before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on November the 20th. We've notified a total of, I believe, 2,000 residences altogether of this hearing. Is that about right, Dave? Which includes all residents and occupants and owners within 300 feet of every single one of the locations involved with this business. And in addition to that, we've posted the Planning Commission report, or that will be posted, I guess, in two days, on the city's website. There will be ads in the paper, et cetera. So we are encouraging the citizens to come out and participate in that meeting. It is the first of three public meetings to deal with that Sober Living by the Sea settlement agreement, which we believe in total is a very good agreement for the city and its residents. And then, lastly, I wanted to make sure that our citizens knew that we are prosecuting our responsibilities under the ordinance we passed. And those responsibilities include having use permit hearings for those group home rehabilitation operators that are applying for use permits to continue in operation. The first of those hearings is scheduled for December the 4th, for Balboa Horizons. We expect that within a day or two, we will have a second use permit hearing scheduled for the following week, the week of December the 8th. I'm expecting shortly beyond that for a third hearing to be scheduled, yet in the month of December. And then that leaves one more that we expect to be scheduled in January of next year. So it's very clear, the city is prosecuting its responsibilities and enforcing this ordinance. We'll continue to do that. We look forward to seeing how these use permit hearings turn out, but I'm expecting that they'll be well organized and respectful of everyone's rights, our citizens, as well as the operators. And so this will be a good thing for the city to further validate our ordinance and to further protect and respect the needs and rights of our citizens. Thanks.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Tim DeGel?
None, thank you.
I just have one, the General Plan Implementation Committee meeting is continuing to meet on the zoning code, not going as fast as I would like, but Sharon, you seem to think we're making good progress? How far are we through it, do you think, on that first run-through?
I believe we just have one more part to go over for the first time, and then there are a number of issues that staff and then consultant are working on that will bring back revisions for the committee.
Okay. So do you think we'll still make what we have in the spring to get to the Planning Commission?
I think so.
Okay. Anyway, the Planning Commissioners are doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this, a lot of the detailed looking at all of the wording. It's a very complex document and a lot of pages in it. Okay. Next part of our agenda is public hearings. Item number 15 is the sale of bonds for Assessment District Number 99-2.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The purpose of Assessment District 92 is to finance and construct the underground utilities and to remove the overhead poles for aesthetic safety and reliability purposes. The Assessment District has been brought to the City Council several times during a rigorous approval process, but the district originates with the request of the residents that reside within the district. Petitions were circulated to all affected property owners within the district, and sufficient resident interest was certified. Council approved the advanced funding of the design work necessary to determine the guaranteed maximum cost of this district, which was not to exceed 3.8, 3.45 million. The completed designs, engineer report, and resolution of intent were brought back again to City Council at a required public hearing on July 22nd. Ballots were then prepared and sent to the residents on August 8th. Votes were tallied, and additional public hearing on September 23rd, and residents voted in favor to approve the district. So at that point, residents were informed that they had the opportunity to pay their assessments in cash during a 30-day cash collection period, which ended on October 24th. Forty-nine percent of the residents opted to pay their entire assessment in cash. Today, we're asking City Council to adopt a resolution which essentially approves the legal documents for us to finance the remaining unpaid component of the Assessment District through the legal sale of bonds. So enclosed in your packets include the resolution, the bond indenture and continuing disclosure agreement, the preliminary official statement, which is the marketing document for the sale of the bonds, and the bond purchase contract. Now, and separate from the resolution, we're also asking for a budget amendment to provide for the funds for assessment related to a particular piece of property that was, the 15th Street restrooms were owned by the state, but it's essentially operated as a city restroom. So with that, the rest of the financing schedule includes the electronic dissemination of the OS on November 14th. Pricing is tentatively scheduled for November 14th, but with the volatility of the municipal bond market, we are allowing for at least the ability to push that back a week or two if there is any significant stagnation in the market. Bond closing tentatively scheduled for December 4th, and we will really play it by ear, based on the recommendations of our financial advisor and underwriter, whether we can pull the trigger and get a good pricing for that bonds on that date. So with that, I'll look to council approval for the resolutions. Will you answer any questions about the district?
Any questions, Dan? Councilman Curry?
Dan, first of all, I appreciate the letter from James Anderson, law firm at McFarland. And Anderson, it outlines for the City Council our responsibilities relative to reviewing and approving the official statement. Let me ask you the question, are you aware of any information regarding the Assessment District or in the preliminary official statement regarding the revenues of the facilities that would be important for an investor to know before purchasing the bonds that is not fully disclosed?
No. And the 30-day period of contest, which may be one of the areas that would be significant, has passed. None of the residents have contested formation of the district. There is nothing that is not disclosed that I'm aware of, that I believe would be relevant to investor, something to the extent of a 40-to-1 value-to-lease ratio. So it's.
And are you aware of any threatened or pending litigation that might affect the ability of the Assessment District to pay its assessments and pay its bonds?
I am not.
And are there any circumstances that exist or now unfolding that could affect the assessment installment revenues, or for that matter, even though not security for the bonds and not directly material to the repayment of the bonds, circumstances that could create budget difficulties that are not described in the POS that should be discussed before the POS is finalized?
I am not.
Okay. And I see Mr. Hessel in the audience, bond counsel. Mr. Hessel, you reviewed this, and you will also attest to its accuracy, as far as you're aware?
As far as I'm aware.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dan. Does anyone from the public want to address the council on this bond sale? Seen no one, bring it back for motion.
I move the recommended actions, including the budget amendment.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. Anybody want to address the council? Will you step forward?
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I see on the calendar that we have an item in front of the Coastal Commission regarding, I guess, the wording of our general plan. And I had a comment there, believe it or not, it's not on group homes, although I think there may be some questions there that people have in that regard. And in particular, is Newport, the waterway over here, is that going to be a new area that we're going to have a concentration of group homes in it, or meeting places, or that kind of thing? And people have asked that. I was not aware of a large concentration. I was aware of a couple offices over there, but I would like to put that question.
Dick, I'm not clear on the area you're talking about. Could you clarify it?
Newport Village, the Bay.
I think he's talking about Lido Marina Villas.
Newport Marina Village.
It's Lido Marina Villas, Dick.
Lido, I'm sorry. It's not Lido Island, though, it's right.
Right, but they call it Lido.
Right, I think, I apologize. I should have looked that up to get it right. The thing that I would like to mention is that we're doing, you have an area in here on non-conforming uses, and it says that you're asking the Coastal Commission to consider. And it says, as stated in the findings for denial, proposed policy 2.2.5-2 is consistent with the Coastal Act. What we're talking about here is public access, public views, and building of, or rebuilding of buildings that are non-conforming uses in our city. And it goes on to say, a finding, that one of the findings that they, you would like to make is, however, if the policy were modified to clarify that such reconstruction to the pre-existing intensity may be allowed, so long as a finding can be made, that the project will not. project will not perpetuate or establish an impediment to public access, nor adversely impact coastal views or biological resources, and require that parking reductions only occur where the proposed uses provide for and promotes the use of alternate modes of transportation, such as ride-sharing, car pools, van pools, public transit, bicycle and walking. Well, I'm particularly speaking to the non-conforming use in Corona del Mar of the rebuilding of our theater. And I have two aspects of that. One-
Can you wrap it up, Dick? Your family's expired.
Yes, I understand, and I'll do that quickly. Thank you. The one aspect is, is that we have nowhere to park any cars to go there, and I gather this is supposed to be sort of a nightclub. I'm not clear. Nobody's been able to inform me of what it is. The second is, is they're now putting structural steel on the roof. Now, that's certainly exceeding the height limit of the building, which is already exceeding the height limit allowed. So, my question is, is whether that's useful. I'm concerned about the parking, and the parking allowed in that building was 300 cars. And 300 cars on the streets of Corona del Mar is everything on that side of the highway, from Carnation to Marguerite to Bayside.
Dick, I think, I think the staff can answer your question when you're sitting down.
I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, let's wait and see what other public comments we get. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close with public comments. Could you comment on, you know, what we applied for on the coastal, the LCP amendment and the status of it, and then what's happening with the Port Theater?
I'll leave the Port Theater for the Planning Director, Mr. Lebo, because I think he has more details on that than I do. As to the Coastal Land Use Plan Amendment, we had our Coastal Land Use Plan certified by the Coastal Commission slightly prior to our general plan update, and during the general plan, we made some land use changes. And so, this is an application to the Coastal Commission for amendments to that land use plan to make it consistent with our general plan, which was approved by the voters. I think what Mr. Nichols was reading from was the Coastal Commission's staff report, and they read a little bit like our staff report, so he may have thought that some of those comments were made by city staff. In fact, those were the comments by the staff of the Coastal Commission, and we don't necessarily agree with all of the findings and the modifications that they have suggested. And so, we are working with staff and the commissioners to try to resolve the remaining issues.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lebo, you want to comment on the Port Theater?
Sir, Mayor and Council, the Port Theater was being renovated under the Landmark Buildings Ordinance, and I know Councilman Gardner called us a couple of weeks ago and asked about some steel that was going up on the roof. I sent a planner out and verified that that was simply an enclosure for the HVAC equipment up there. Again, as long as the future use of the property is substantially similar to that, existed in 1962, there is no requirement for additional parking, so the building is compliant with the code.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, we have no reason to believe this nightclub plan is planned as a theater, whether it's movies or concerts, we don't know for sure, but-
There's no application for use permit for liquor license.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lebo. Well, you might as well stay up there, because the next item is, here's the Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report.
Mayor, I know you love to announce that this is your favorite part of the meeting.
It is.
I don't want to bribe you. The Planning Commission had two public hearing items last Thursday. The first was for the expansion of the Hyatt Regency on Jamboree at Back Bay Drive. The proposal is to add 88 timeshare units. They want to add a new spa and exercise facility, new ballroom, two-story parking garage, and some additional buildings for maintenance and housekeeping. There are several discretionary actions being taken. One of those included development agreements, so the Planning Commission's action was recommendation to the Planning Commission. They recommended certification of the environmental impact report. They did find that there was an impact that could not be minimized, and that was during the construction period, the noise associated with construction. So, that will require an adoption, also a statement of consideration before by the City Council. That should be coming to you, I think January 13 is the date you'll get that. The other item was the City Hall General Plan Amendment to change the general plan designation consistent with Measure B that was approved by the voters back in February, and that would change the general plan land use designation on the future City Hall site, 6.5 acres north of the existing Central Library, from open space to public facilities. That was also recommended for approval, and I think we're bringing that back to council on the 25th, consistent with your City Hall discussion. So, that's it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lebo? Thank you. Okay, on to continued business. The next item is item number 17, the City Hall Design Committee Draft Final Report. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to include, as part of the same discussion item, Agenda Item S-19. This is a report from the City Building Committee to, it's a recommendation that we do a number of things. It's relating to the City Hall Design Committee's role during the schematic design and design development phase of the City Hall and Park Project. And I'm just going to go through it briefly before Mr. Tucker gives the committee's report, so I don't disrupt the flow of his report. This is a recommendation from the Building Committee that we have been impressed by the work of the City Hall Design Committee. They've spent the last seven months or so diligently working on our design competition, and have certainly displayed quite a bit of expertise and knowledge that could be of value to us as we move through the schematic design and development, design development phase of the City Hall project. So, we're making the following recommendations, that the committee be renamed to reflect the fact that a park is involved in the design, that the term be extended a year to December 31, 2009, instead of December 31 this year, that two members of the City Hall Design Committee be designated to serve on a subcommittee, and this subcommittee would work with the Building Committee. That's an ad hoc committee of three City Council members, as the Building Committee oversees the schematic design and design development phase of the City Hall and Park Project. At such time as the subcommittee joins the Building Committee as ex-official members of the committee, those building committees will be public meetings, and they'll be agendized and noticed as appropriately. And then, in addition, to hold at least two public meetings during the schematic design and design development phase of the entire full five-member City Hall Design Committee to weigh in on the design changes as well as take public comments. The recommendation is for two actions, one to adopt the resolution implementing this, and the second is to designate two persons to be members of the City Hall and Park Design Committee Subcommittee. I would recommend that we adopt the first part of the recommendation and continue the second part till the next meeting, and allow the City Council Building Ad hoc Committee confer on which members of the City Hall Design Committee should be appointed to that Subcommittee. Okay, with that, did that all make sense? I hope it did. So, with that, I will invite Larry Tucker, Chairman of the City Hall Design Committee, to give us his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. We started this effort after your actions in late February, and I believe our first meeting was on or about April 7, and we've been at it ever since. The Design Committee consists of five, it's actually six members, but five voting members. I'm the chairman, but I got the gavel, but no vote. But the voting members are Andy Bowden, who's a landscape architect, Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Steve Sandlin, and Linda Taylor. They're all architects, and they're all here tonight. Why don't you raise your hand, so people can see who you are, contingent over here. Each of the members of the committee has lived in the city for 27 years, might be 28 years by the time, by now. It was 27 when they applied. They know the city well, and they've dedicated a significant amount of hours for the betterment of the city, and it really has been an outstanding committee. I originally was a little bit miffed that I didn't get a vote, and then after watching them in action, I realized that I didn't deserve a vote. They're really very capable, way beyond my pay grade. The initial tasks that we had were, and this was out of your resolution that was adopted in February, was to issue a request for qualifications to world-class architects interested in participating in the program. And we worked for a couple of meetings on that and came up with a very detailed RFQ that did go out to a very broad spectrum of sources that would reach architects from really all over the country. We even had a couple outside the country that threw their two cents in. We also assisted the Building Committee to develop general design parameters to be used for the participating architects. And what these really were, were constraints. There's, there are certain issues with the site that just, you know, constrain what the designs can be, and in order for the architects to come up with a plan that made sense, we had to tell them what the constraints were. Probably the most noteworthy of the constraints was the, was a height constraint. We reviewed the qualifications of the architects who responded to the RFQ, all 51 of them, and they were rather thick dossiers, if you will, of the expertise and backgrounds of the various architects. So, that took a great deal of time and effort. It's just one little line up here, but that represents hours and hours of work. And then, the committee was also charged with coming up with five architects to participate in the design competition, which ended up happening. We reviewed the design concepts and held public meetings on the design concepts, and then we were to make a recommendation of an architect and a design concept to the City Council, and that's what we're here to do tonight. Additional tasks that we received is, or we took on was, inevitably, there were questions asked about the RFQ. We thought we had done a perfect job, but there were still some questions. So, we had to propose answers, and the answers all came from the Building Committee, but our committee made recommended answers. We helped edit the general design parameters. We prepared a judging procedure and criteria to judge the responses to the RFQ and the design competition itself. And that was a little two-page document, but it was a kind of a critical document for us, because it set out the ground rules by which we compared what we received. As I mentioned, we had 51 responses to the RFQ, and those were narrowed down first to 13. And I was, I only missed one of the 11 meetings that we had, and happily it was that one, because that was a grind to get down to the 13. I came back in time for the next step. The staff reviewed the references for the 13. Once we got it down to a manageable level, the staff went to work just to try to make sure that we ended up with qualified firms, and ultimately, we came down to five firms: Boland Swinski-Jackson, Gonzalez Gooddale, Johnson Fain, LPA, and Rosetti. Then, after we had issued the recommendation on the five firms and the council confirmed that, we had an additional round of questions about some of the design issues, as the designers were trying to come up with their designs. We held all of our meetings, were open, noticed, Brown Act meetings, and so they were all open to the public. As I mentioned, we had 11 meetings, and at each meeting, the public had an opportunity to speak, and at most of the meetings, the public had an opportunity to speak more than once. So, we had several participants that got up and commented more than once during the meetings. We didn't really close off comment. We, you know, we had good attendance, but we didn't have enough attendance where we had to limit the comments. So, we heard virtually everything that everybody had to say. On Saturday, September 27, we had a nine-hour get-together here in this room, where each design team got to present its design for 45 minutes, and then the committee had an opportunity to ask questions for 45 minutes, just to kind of get our arms around what we had seen, because it was the first opportunity for us to see the designs was as the public saw them. We hadn't any inkling as to what we were going to be seeing before, so. But this committee is very nimble, and they figured out very quickly what they were looking at, and I think we had a pretty good understanding after that meeting. The next step for us after the 9/27 meeting is, is we've had four additional meetings where we gathered public input, and it was as much public input as the architects talking amongst themselves just to talk through the designs, what they'd seen, what they liked, what they didn't like. I was interested in making sure that we had that interactive discussion, in case any minds were there to be changed, or things that were attractive to one architect that weren't to another. The architects that may have liked something or disliked something had an opportunity to express themselves, and of course, the public interests started increasing at that point, so we had a fair amount of public comment about each of the designs. That all culminated in the last couple of meetings, where we started focusing in on a report as well as a ranking, because, you know, once we had the ranking done, of course, we had to have a report that we could deliver to the council that would have the detail that supported the recommendation. So, we prepared that report in draft form at this point for you. It's in final form for us. And the reason it was in draft form for you is, is in order to make your agenda timeframe, we hadn't had our meeting to finalize the report. So, we gave you the draft report, and then I'm going to point out in a couple seconds the few changes that were made. We went through and ranked the designs. We explained, the report does, we explained the committee's reasons for selecting the design given the highest ranking. We've offered recommendations to the council relating to the design and other issues as the project moves forward, and that's, those are both pro and cons. And we also have a series of further recommendations to consider that would be applicable really to all of the plans. We didn't want to forget to do that, because each one of the plans is different, and each one of the plans has strengths and weaknesses, and we just kind of went through and thought, well, there are certain things that really should be in all these plans, if it can be worked out within those plans. As far as the changes to our report that you received in a draft form, and the final report will come back to you on November 25 with all of these changes included. But one of the, one of the things that was added is, is that where we talked about the rankings of the design, there was a desire to make sure that the council understood that the vote was a split vote when we ultimately got there. It's a, and you can see from, well, we'll come to the design, the rankings. I'll explain that in a couple of minutes. We also added a general recommendation that if feasible, consider retaining the High Point of the southernmost Meadow area to maintain the oceanward view. That probably should have been in there before. Somebody made a good catch on that. It was in our RFQ, so we added that. And then, we also added a couple of items on budgets. We added just a reference that budget information was given by each one of the design teams, and then we've put together a summary of the budget information that we received. Ready for the next one? The rankings came out. Boland Swinski-Jackson had 18 points. We did it on a point basis. What I first attempted to do was to see if I could get everybody to agree on one architect, and that was wishful thinking, but I had to try. But I had a Plan B, which was, everybody had to vote 5, 4, 3, 2, 1 for best to, you know, the one they liked the best to the one they liked the least. And as you can see, we ended up with two firms actually having the same point total. And interestingly, one of those firms, Boland Swinski, had three first-place votes, and then the other members of the committee did- the other members of the committee didn't even rate them in the top three. So that was interesting. LPA was pretty consistent, and then all the way down to Rosetti. But if you look at the first four, we only had two points separating the first four design teams. So that part I thought was interesting. We ended up with a recommendation for Boland-Siewinski as the design team and his plan going forward. And that was the split vote I'm referring to. The five, the three members who felt they were the best outvoted the two that didn't. So that was the nature of that vote. And then here's the concept plan that was presented on the 27th. I believe all the council members, well, I know all the council members were there that day. So this is just the plan that you've already seen, the park site. Now, these are the key reasons for the Boland-Siewinski plan that the architects have, you know, have came up with. The aesthetics of the structure, the design, in this case, captures an iconic image for the city of Newport Beach. Parking structure separate from City Hall and located along MacArthur Boulevard berm. It's likely it will be less expensive to build than an entirely or mostly underground parking facility. And as you might recall from the designs, two of the designers suggested a parking that was above ground in a structure, and three of them had the parking in whole or in part underground. Coincidentally, it was the two that had it above ground that ended up tied for first. Design minimizes grading and dirt export minimizing costs. Design creates an airy working environment for the city staff, including significant natural light and direct sun flow. Design creates a people-friendly courtyard between the parking structure and City Hall. The roof covers a large amount of space, allowing building flexibility underneath. Design capitalizes on inexpensive technologies for the roof structural system. Good vehicular access from library parking lot to the parking structure. Design uses sustainable design features, which should result in reduced operating costs. Landscaping along Avocado is a continuation of the library landscape scheme and ties the sites together. That's the library site and the City Hall site. The park design leaves most of the topography of the park unchanged so that it's primarily a natural park. As with all of the plans, and to the extent you want to see the pros and cons, the minutes that were kept, and Shirley or Bernie did a great job of this, especially when we started getting into the details, the minutes became very detailed for pros and cons. So you can go back to the minutes that you probably already have or you certainly have before the next meeting, and you can get a lot of detail as to what the architects liked and didn't like about each plan. And I can tell you that each plan had plenty of issues. It was a, it's a complicated project. We gave them 90 days to kind of come up with the concept part of it. But design is an iterative process, and the kinks get worked out as you go through various iterations. But these are some of the suggested refinements. Consider changing the pod modular sections. In other words, the size of the pods might need to be expanded or contracted to be, to fit in with the functions that are going to be necessary for this facility. Review the sail design feature. That's kind of the iconic feature that goes into the view plane, and it's something that probably needs to be looked at again. Whether it's changed or not, I don't know, but it certainly is something. I'm sure you'll hear some comments from some members of the audience tonight on it. Add surface parking. This is kind of a, for all the plans that didn't have surface parking, we felt like there needed to be a certain amount of surface parking just to, because a lot of people aren't going to be there for very long. They're going to want to get in and out of the facility, and they're not going to want to work their way through the parking structure. So hopefully, we'll have a plan that can accommodate that. Improve the aesthetics of the parking structure. While their building was iconic, their parking structure wasn't. Review amphitheater and add parking that will reduce amphitheater. There's an amphitheater area on this plan that was identified as a facility that was probably larger than it needed to be, and the parking could be, surface parking could be substituted there. Integrate City Hall and the park better. Some plans were better than others at that integration. I think it's just a little more focus needs to be brought to that topic. Refine council chambers, community room, and parking. Reduce light and glare. That's probably one of the bigger ones with a lot of these plans is just, is the glare factor. And improve the link to the library. These are the additional recommendations are next, and this would be really for any plan that you picked. And we broke them down into three or four different topic areas. Maintain the MacArthur berm. Once again, mitigate light and glare on site. Separate pedestrian and vehicle accessways and primary circulation elements. Provide a floor plan that will easily accommodate future modifications to city functions. You know, you always tend to think that what's happening today is what's going to always happen, but it never does. So, you know, one of the key things for each one of these plans is to have the ability of the building to be adjustable to work for changing times and changing focuses. Be logistically feasible, understanding how the duration of construction will affect the surrounding area. Integrate the library so as to develop a true civic center. Provide for restrooms and easy parking for park visitors. Show strong connectivity between the North Park parcel to the Central Park parcel. The North Park is the part that's north of San Miguel, and it was, the concern was, it's just kind of a, you know, forgotten stepchild on the other side of the street and trying to figure out a way to make that property usable in certain respects. We did have a suggestion of a wine bar at one point, but I'm not sure how that's going to work next to the bus station. Consider a cafe or small coffee shop. That's to take care of the needs of staff and visitors. Have a vehicular connection from City Hall parking to the library parking lot. Contain the council chambers and the multipurpose community room in a single building. Create a direct link between city offices and council chambers for staff and officials. More elements. Design the council chambers and community room to act together as a single, large community space for whenever that's necessary, and whenever you guys have those overflow crowds that you have occasionally. Provide for usable contiguous outdoor space for community events. Provide access to natural light from all staff workstations. Continue landscape treatment from library olive groves along Avocado. Screen roof mounted antennas and dishes as required for city operations. And consider retaining the high point of the park's southernmost meadow area to maintain the oceanward view. Then, another recommendation regardless of the plan picked is ensure that design team selected has demonstrable track record of good working relationships with clients and meeting their wishes, even if those wishes are not entirely consistent with the design team's vision. And one of the things I think is very clear to me now, it's probably clear to the members of the committee earlier on, I kind of thought that we were going to pick a designer and a plan, and they were going to go design it. But when you start looking at all the details, you realize the number of changes that are going to be likely as you find out through the design iteration process what parts of the design work and can be afforded and what parts don't. So it's really going to be a kind of a critical element that the council feel comfortable that the design team has the ability to adjust. You know, it's certainly an era of limits. If it wasn't before, it is now, and there may be needs that, or wants that just don't quite fit. So you're going to go through the process, and some of the parts of the design just may not actually work as well as you'd like them to. So it's really up to the council team and the design team to be able to work together. So that's really a key element. Staff input. The city council should review and consider the merits of the report of the city staff on the constructibility of each plan presented and the opinions of staff as to the functionality of each plan. We asked the staff to go through and look at the feasibility, functionality, constructibility of each plan and to give us their thoughts. And they did in a great deal of detail, and that's an appendix to the report. So I think you'll find that fairly instructive. Those are the people that are going to be working in the building daily. So it's, and also responsible for giving you advice as to the maintenance costs that are going to be associated with any given design. So we felt that was an important report. And phasing, if the budget constraints impact the construction of the council's preferred design, consider phasing the project to construct the building in phase one and the park in phase two. We felt it was important enough to state that, I don't think you want to end up with less of a building than what you should have because you can't do everything in the first phase. And after all, the park itself, at least parts of it under the RFQ and the, I believe the general design parameters contemplated that much of it would be a natural park anyway. So it's going to be probably reasonably possible to do a phasing. And then the last item is certainly not the least, third-party cost estimate. We recommend that you obtain a third-party cost estimate for the designs deemed feasible alternative designs by the city council. We asked for cost information. In the RFQ, we put out cost information based upon input from the building committee as to what various segments ought to cost, how much the building ought to cost, arrange, parking spaces arrange, and site work arrange. And then asked each design firm to give us information on that. Some was rougher than others, all was fairly rough. So it's something that we would recommend that the council go through, you know, that effort and tie down some better numbers so that you have a comfort level, that the numbers that we've been given by the designers actually fit. As I mentioned, the top two designs both had parking structures above ground instead of underground. I think intuitively, those are likely to cost less. That's just my sense. I don't know whether the committee shares that sense, but that's my personal sense on that. In conclusion, the committee makes a recommendation of Boland-Siewinski-Jackson with a refinement suggested and consistent with our additional recommendations. And we thank the five firms for the effort and creativity that went into each concept. They really were, it was a joy to go through and look at how they all came together. It was a very interesting process, and I think the city certainly benefited from that. We also thank the city council for support of our work, letting us have the space to hopefully come up with something that was a worthwhile recommendation. And the staff support, which was really important. Dave Kiff was outstanding. I mean, everything he did was turned around on a dime. It was of terrific quality. Much appreciate that. When we asked for the staff report on the constructibility and functionality, Steve Badham stepped up and did a great job, worked with the rest of the staff, gathered all the comments, and spent one of the meetings, about 45 minutes, walking through each one, which was very helpful. And Shirley, who I mentioned earlier, did an outstanding job on the minutes. As the chairman of the committee, I think I speak for all of the committee, that we strongly support the involvement of the design professionals on this committee with in the next phase of the project design. In other words, the recommendation for the next agenda item that's before you, we support. We just think that it's going to be a valuable resource for the building committee to have members of this committee, just to hear how they view the world and architectural projects. And if you haven't been through that before with this many architects, it's, you know, you just see it, you see it in technicolor when they're there relating things to you. So we look forward to continuing to work with the council on this project, and that concludes my report. The only other request I have is at the end of the public comment, I'd like to come up here and, and I promise I'll take a lot less than three minutes, but I'd like to make my public comment as a private citizen and not a chairman of this committee.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Open it up to any questions that the council may have of Larry or the committee members. One thing that I'd just like to remind all of us is that we're here this evening to get the report, get information, and not make a decision or express an opinion. So it's really more of an information gathering mode from the committee members as well as people in the public that are here this evening. So, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Gardner.
In looking at the rankings, I can understand why a landscape architect might be, have a different point of view because he's probably looking more at the landscape. But I'd be interested in Mr. Hill's comments because he obviously disagreed. And just briefly, I don't expect you to go into great detail, but just what your concerns or hesitations were about the particular design that was submitted.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm not sure "brief" is part of the vocabulary. The committee worked very hard in establishing an RFQ to, in part, not have this competition be purely a beauty contest. And within that RFQ, there were very specific conditions of functionality and cost control and these different types of things. Judging criteria was established to evaluate the proposals, and there was a certain percentage of points allocated to flexibility and sustainability and these different types of things. As I looked at the contestants in this competition, I did not evaluate BCJ highly because I felt they had missed many of those points that were in the RFQ. I would merely summarize my comments by saying, if you would look at the recommendations that the committee has made for suggested changes to this design, you will find a list of many of the criteria that were in the RFQ. And I think that if you looked at the presented designs on the other side of the coin and said, number one, every design added value to the process, gave us information that we needed and that we enjoyed. None of the designs were perfect. You would expect that from a design competition. So if you look at the designs that would require the least amount of change to meet the requirements of the RFQ, you certainly would not have selected BCJ. And I think that was my reasoning for my decision.
Your report, Tim.
Question for the chair. What are your thoughts as far as what the committee considered to be among the major challenges of the site?
Well, just the physical nature of the site and the fact that you have a view plane that pretty much is right where the site level is today. So you were digging and dealing with parking. And I think that was kind of the key. I think that drove a lot of the creativity and a lot of the cost and the considerations. So, I mean, those are probably the biggest items.
Councilman Hen.
I'd have to say I was particularly struck by how close the competition is. I'm glad this is still up on the screen here, the rankings. You know, there's one firm that clearly fell behind, but four that were within all very close-striking distance of each other. And the reports, the report gave a lot of information about the designs, focusing on the positive and negative aspects of each design. And yet, part of the charge, and I thought an important part of the charge for the committee, was to make judgments about the architects as well as the designs. Now, I realize it's hard to separate the design from the architect, but we're charged with making an overall decision here, and the designs got ranked very close together. So it seems to me that there's, it would be appropriate, actually, to hear more from our design committee about their views of the architects. Because I went through, I thought the detail that was given to us, I forget which exhibit it is, that shows the strengths and weaknesses of all the designs was very informative. And it's very clear that every one of the designs is going to require a good deal of change, and therefore, there will be a lot of ins and outs and working with whatever architect is selected. So I marry that, the need for an effective working process with the architect, to the fact that it's a very close competition on the designs themselves. I'm taking a lot of time to come to my question. My question is, do you think, and any of the other architects may want to weigh in on this, do you think it makes sense for the design committee to come back to us before our next meeting with a separate discussion of the architects involved in the process and an evaluation of their strengths and weaknesses to be an effective partner to the city in finalizing the design once one is selected?
Let me attempt to answer part of the question, and I think I'll call up one of the architects that may give you an opposite opinion of Mr. Hill's view. And I respect each one of these architects tremendously. I mean, they're all terrific. There's nobody that's coming out from left field at all. But our charge was to conduct a design competition, and part of that charge didn't really set up a process for us to interview architects to figure out which one would be the easiest to work with, because at the point in time when we conducted the design competition, we didn't really know that we were going to end up with something that looked like that, that, and I judge from your question, that what you're really, you know, your expectation is, is that, well, you know, tell us a little bit more about the designers, because you've told us it's important to have somebody that you can work with, because the plans are going to change. But the process really wasn't set up to go through that. But in the RFQ part of the process, there was a lot of recommendations and a lot of information about that. So we got, had a lot of third-party recommendations. The staff went back through and did recommendations. And I think these are all well-known design firms, that these architects pretty much kind of know how they, how they're viewed in the marketplace of architecture to begin with. So I think you would find, and I'll invite one of them up to come talk about it, that, you know, their opinion is, is, I'm sure is that Boland-Zwinski-Jackson would be somebody that you could work with, just like the other four of them. You know, they're all good firms. But I'll go ahead and, you know, and just ask one of them to come up here, and other than Rush, who's had his three minutes. And we'll let them answer.
But particularly by virtue of the fact that you've been in close quarters with each of these architectural firms for, I think, at least a portion of this process, and so...
The close quarters was what you saw on the 27th. That's really all that our contact with...
But there wasn't much back and forth with the architects, other than that one day?
That's right. There was none.
Okay.
I think none would be there.
Actually, they weren't allowed to interact with the members of the committee.
That's the case. Certainly not before, and, well, we hadn't reached a decision. We didn't really want people lobbying us. We hope they didn't lobby you, because it was kind of a, that was the whole purpose...
Technically, they weren't even allowed to contact city staff except through the building committee and Dave Kiff.
Actually, I think they directed everything to Dave Kiff.
No, what I'm saying, Dave was...
That's right.
Nevertheless, I would be curious about that issue, because it does become an issue of potential significance in view of how close the designs were ranked here, I think.
I think it is. Linda, you want to do it, or you want Steve to do it? One of you?
As Linda's coming up, Councilmember Hen, Larry mentioned the reference checks that we did. The first question we asked with each of our reference check was, how easy was this firm to work with in terms of potential changes to the design? So I think, as Larry's saying, these five firms could not have met this threshold had, and even made it to this point, had we not had favorable responses. But I'll let the smarter people comment there, too.
Yeah, we definitely did look at the architects. But beyond that, we also were really cognizant of the fact that it isn't just the architectural firm that we're dealing with here. It's very important that the landscape architect, who presented also at our meeting, was considered in terms of their expertise, as well as their ability to work with the team as a whole, plus the engineers that they were bringing. So they brought, not necessarily to the interview, but to the RFQ and to the organization of their team, a complete list of all of their consultants. So it's a large team and a lot of different consulting services to consider once. But we definitely took it into account. It wasn't without that in mind. And I just wanted to mention about Boland-Zwinski-Jackson. I think that they, there was definitely consideration for them in that they have an outstanding track record, and their references bore that out in terms of working with, on civic projects for communities like this. They have a long record of that. They are also a previous recipient of AIA National Award as the best firm of the year, which is to, is not just about their design expertise, but is also about their ability to really deliver incredible projects that are, also please their clients. So I think we had a chance here to have a firm that not only was an outstanding architect, but also with them, they brought Peter Walker as their landscape architect, which is also very, very top-ranked, you know, nationally, and Overup, who is the engineering firm, and I think also one that Steve is familiar with. We're all pretty familiar with them in the engineering world. It's outstanding. So it was their entire team, as well as their design, definitely considered.
Thanks, Linda. First of all, I'd like to thank Larry for his leadership as chairman of our committee. I think it was a tough task, sometimes herding cats, but he did an excellent job of it. In the, I echo everything that Linda just said, and if you have an opportunity to look through the Boland-Zwinski-Jackson booklet, one of the pages at the end talks about balancing design and budget. And the quote here says, "Working closely with the city, the final project scope and quality will be adjusted to be in alignment with the approved budget as we collaborate with you to define the project in greater detail." So I think this exhibits some of their willingness to work with the city council, the building committee, and the city staff in accomplishing the goals. In architectural school, we used to say that if you have five architects judge a competition, you'll get at least six opinions. The fact, the fact that we were able to have three of the five members of the committee zero in and select one of the firms as the number-one selection, and then one firm got a vote from two other members of the committee, I think speaks volumes to how the committee felt about the design. The fact that they did meet the criteria, I believe personally that they did an excellent job in meeting the criteria that was established for the judging and the criteria and the design parameters that were established by the building committee. And I think that all of the designs have some strengths and weaknesses, as you saw in the report. But when you weigh everything in total, and we could look at this, we didn't decide that we're going to look at this building design and this park and try and mix and match. We looked at the holistic design as it was presented, and we clearly believe that the Boland-Zwinski-Jackson proposal was the best.
I have a question. There were a couple of things that struck me. One is that they have a modular design, and one of the first things is throw out the modular design. The waved roofs was considered iconic, but there's concern about glare. So one of my questions is, is there a way of protecting from glare for the neighboring residents without destroying that design? And you have another aspect of it, which is the sail, and is it still iconic when you get rid of the sail because it intrudes into the view plane? I mean, how would those aspects, would that, any of that affect your opinion of the design?
I looked at that. Those are all good issues. The first one is the modular design, and I think one of the ways they were looking at the modular design was to create the minimum impact on the grading, so that they stepped it up the hills, and that was how they, that was one of the reasons why they came up with that modular design. With some modifications and refinement, maybe some of those modules are combined, so that then that whole, the modular, the office layouts work a little bit better. With respect to the glare issue, I believe that if you were to reorient the angle, the axis, of the project, so it's in a more northerly direction, that that would mitigate the glare to the residences above MacArthur Boulevard. And with respect to the sail, while that is an iconic element, I think, again, as you look at the grades, perhaps the building, the grades get flattened a little bit, the building gets lowered, or there could be modifications to the sail itself that would mitigate any issues with respect to the view plane. But we believe the view plane is a very important element that should be maintained.
If I could, I'd like to add one other point, too. The general design parameters did allow for design elements to be incursions into the, to the view plane. And so none of the architect, you know, the architects took that at face value. And as I used, as I said to the committee during the hearings, you know, you can't dock somebody or view their, their plan less favorable because they follow the general design parameters that the city council published. And so that was one of the, one of the elements. Now, one of the recommendations we made was to take a look at it again. I'm not sure whether it's, you know, whether it's an important aspect or it's not an important aspect. Certainly, you'll hear from the residents across the street that they think it's, that's the case. But it's one of those judgment calls that, you know, the city council's going to have to make. But we had a couple of designs that actually went into the view plane because they were design elements, and just as, you know, as they were allowed to do, they tried to come up with the best design, and every once in a while, you end up with that happening.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
Yes, I was disappointed in Schedule I, to the extent that, which is the one that summarized the costs. To the extent that two of the bidders apparently submitted either confusing or grossly...
Inadequate.
Inadequate. There you go. Information and detail that allowed any kind of a reasonable evaluation. Of course, it was BCJ that was apparently confused people about the grading and whether it was included or wasn't, and to what extent. And then Johnson-Fain, I guess, was it, that just had almost no detail at all?
Yeah, I think we had a couple of them that had a reasonable amount of detail.
Said it was going to cost 69 million and trust us. So I would like to get a better evaluation of that between now and the next council meeting. And I guess my question is, how possible is it to require those bidders to either clarify or provide additional detail within the next two weeks that allows staff to give us a little better opinion about the cost reliability?
Well...
For those two particular bids.
Yeah, I mean, really, the best thing to do is to have, have your own experts provide that, that information. And, you know, I think, you know, one of the, one of the features that was important to the design committee on the Boland-Zwinski plan is that they felt like it could be economically built. Now, I don't know that that's the case or not the case with the others. I don't know that anybody really came in and looked at it, but, but what we recommended was, for those designs that you believe are feasible, you ought to have somebody take, take a, you know, a harder look at the cost numbers, just to make sure you have a pretty good idea where it's going. But I...
Can that be done in two weeks?
I can tell you that, I don't know that you can get it done in two weeks, no. But, you know, I think just the, you know, the intuitive part is, is that the ones with the parking structures above ground are probably going to be cheaper than the ones that are, that are below ground when it, when it comes right down to it. But it was because of the, the information we received and the job that we had to do, you know, the committee, we didn't have experts or people that were to, you know, available to us to go out and do that. It really wasn't our focus. We said, here's our, our parameters. This is what things are supposed to cost. And if you pick a firm that's your first choice and those numbers don't match up, then you have one or two choices at that point. Well, go on to somebody else, or can you work with the firm to get your numbers where they need to be?
Yeah, to be clear, I wasn't disappointed in the design committee or staff in that respect. I was disappointed in the quality of detail in the bids. And so...
Right.
It's not clear to me what we do about that. I mean, if our plan is to really try and make a decision in the next, at the next council meeting, and we can't really get a reliable view of cost, that's kind of...
I suppose the, and maybe it, maybe it doesn't bother me quite as much from the standpoint that, that I believe that what the next step is, is to start the design process to figure out exactly what you can and can't do within your budget. It's like going to an interior decorator and you say, how much is it going to cost to make my house beautiful? And the first question they always say is, well, what's your budget? You know, well, I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to find out from you what my budget should be. Well, it's the same thing with the architects. They're going to say, what's your budget? And we'll start working accordingly.
Well, in my house, we set a budget and then we ignore it. So I don't want to make that mistake.
Well, I don't think we want to do that here.
Well, in this, you know, in this process, I think that Steve, when he made the quote out of the one architect's brochure, I forget exactly how it was phrased, but it talked about an interactive process with the city. I mean, we have set a budgetary goal and what we set out, and it's now a matter of whichever architect is selected, that we work with that architect to reasonably adhere to, to that budget. I don't know how far we, we certainly can't get good budget estimates in the, in the next two weeks, but I think, as Larry pointed out, these designs kind of fall into two categories. The ones that have underground parking are intuitively going to be a heck of a lot more expensive than the ones that have separate parking structures. And if you look at the rankings, the two designs that have separate parking structures came out at the top of the committee's list. So to a large extent, the answer to your question is that it has to be part of the interactive process. We, we have set a general budget. To the extent that we can meet that or that we want to exceed it is going to be part of going through the next phase of the project.
Although to select a, a design that, that puts you well, well in the hole against that objective is also a problem at the outset, so...
Well, they, yeah, I can't express any opinions, but information is there. Don?
I think that one of the things we have to take into consideration is that I don't think that we should consider these presentations as being bids. A bid is based on something that is, has a design and you're really out there. We're looking at concepts here, and the architectural firms have said, within the concepts that we propose, we feel that we can meet the various different prices that are up there. I think that the committee has recommended a number of changes for each one of the designs. Each one of those changes is going to affect the costs in some way or another. But I think that the point is, is that we establish the budget that we want to work to, and then this is where the architects use their magic and, and make sure that they are only about 40% above the budget. At least most of the architects, now, if it was an engineer doing it, he'd be right on.
The, you know, and that's really the way this is, is going to play out. As much as people would love to get their arms around real numbers, starting off my professional career as an accountant, I'm a real number type of guy. I've now built enough things to know that, that at this early stage, it's, it's really a kind of, kind of a guess, a little bit of a gut level. You, you establish what your budget is. They've come up with a basic format of a design, but I'm sure it will change in certain respects, hopefully not greatly. But, you know, the city needs to be comforted that it's picked a design team that can be flexible, and they'll end up with a great project when, when it's all said and done. But it's a little difficult to give somebody three months and $50,000 and expect that you're going to be able to tie down their cost numbers in a, any meaningful way, especially with all this dirt work. I mean, the site work, it's the civil engineers that may not be perfect on that. I mean, that's where the numbers are really, you know, really come up and bite you. It's the stuff that's, that you can't see that you encounter as you go.
But it certainly ought to be possible to clarify BCJ's bid about whether the grading was included or not, the cost of grading, and the number they gave us. I mean, it seemed like it was unclear.
Uh, it seemed like, to me, it wasn't included because their number was, was, was lower. I mean, it, it, all the numbers are going to be, for the site work, should roughly be in the same ballpark for the above-ground and also for the underground, roughly. But, yeah, I mean, I, I'm certain that's something we can ask them for, to see what other information we have available. I, I think all, you know, not every firm submitted everything that they generated to us in terms of the package, because we did ask for additional things, and they turned them around almost immediately, which means that they had them, they just didn't see fit to include it. So I don't, I don't know. I guess we'll, we can just ask that question, can't we, Dave?
Actually, it's clear to me that for B C J, it was not included, because they did, just yesterday, because I was confirming the, the information yesterday, say that, yeah, we think we can come in within the design parameters, except for the significant grading work. And I debated whether or not I should add three million dollars to the, that far line there, right here, as an estimate, and then just decided, well, I should just present it that way and footnote it, as I did. So Larry's right, arguably, you could bump that up by three, and they'd be right up there at sixty-three.
Councilman Gardner?
Uh, the minutes of the committee meetings, are they online?
They are online, I think, just except for Monday night's meeting, because those minutes were not approved. But if folks at home want to look at it, every meeting's minutes are up there, all lined up.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we're going to open it for public comment. How many people want to speak this evening? Okay, I think we can stick with our five minutes with that many people. Okay, I'll invite anybody that wants to testify to come forward, please. You have five minutes, and the yellow light will come on when you have one minute left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to take a lot less than five minutes. I just want to speak a little bit to the view issues, not only for your benefit, but for the benefit of the people who I hope are watching this at home. We've heard a lot tonight about view, and there are, of course, two distinct view issues related to this site. One is the magnificent public view from MacArthur Boulevard and from the park itself, and I know that that is going to be handled. I want to give you a little history of the other view plane, the one from Harborview Hills over that entire site, all of the land that the Irvine Company gave to the city from San Joaquin Hills Road down to Pacific Coast Highway, Avocado, and MacArthur. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding by people as to where that view plane came from, and I have all the information. I, I laughingly say I've been around long enough that I'm now the institutional memory. The view plane began with a private agreement between the Harborview Hills Community Association and the Irvine Company. At the time, when the Irvine Company owned the land that Harborview Hills is on, they didn't sell it initially, they only leased it. And they also owned, of course, all of this property, which was scheduled for development. Back in about the early nineteen seventies, before I ever moved here, the Irvine Company agreed with the neighbors living in Harborview that it was not fair for them to sell the same view twice. They had sold the homes in the Harborview Hills neighborhood with a premium for their views, and of course, they had all this undeveloped land down below those homes, across MacArthur, on this site. And they, they agreed that it would be unfair for them to sell the homes with a view and then build buildings that blocked that view. So the Irvine Company and the neighborhood entered into an agreement. The city's view plane ordinance was adopted in about nineteen seventy-nine, eighty. It was merely a formality. The Irvine Company agreed to it, they were the landowner of this property, and it was also, of course, agreed to by the neighborhood. And it was simply a formality to have in the city code a reflection of the private agreement between the neighborhood and the Irvine Company. When the city took this property as part of the Siosa Agreement in nineteen ninety, you took it, subject to the view plane. The view plane was there. No private developer would be allowed to exceed that view plane. And I, I think it would be imminently unfair for the city to take this land that the Irvine Company gave you in exchange for some development rights. They gave it to you, frankly, a little bit, probably less expensively, I mean, they didn't charge you anything, but it had less value to them because of the view plane. And that was because of this early agreement that's been in place for some forty years. So in any event, my point is that, when you took it in nineteen ninety, it had a view plane on it, and I know you're sensitive to that, but I simply wanted to emphasize to you how important it is to the neighborhood, and that I think it would be imminently unfair for the city to build a building that pierced that view plane when you would never have allowed a private developer to do it, and when the Irvine Company, who gave you the land, would never have done it. That's all I have to say. Answer any questions, if you have any?
I, I have one. Was, was that private agreement, was ever recorded against the land as a, as a view easement or anything of that nature?
It wasn't recorded, because instead of recording it, the thought was that it was more enforceable if they had a city ordinance that took care of it. So if you had the testimony from those city council, planning commission meetings and city council meetings back in seventy-nine and eighty, the, the record is there, but the, the actual document was not recorded. It would have been an equitable servitude, and I think it was just thought at the time that a city ordinance was better than, than some kind of deed restriction.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Hello, I'm Denise Woltmath, and I'm a Newport Beach resident, and I'm also a resident of Harborview Hills. And I'm here to speak to you about the selection in terms of City Hall. A couple of years ago, when I attended one of these meetings, there was discussions, and this was before the vote, there was discussions on where the committee members stood in terms of the City Hall location. And I remember clearly that one of the members of the current City Hall, at that time also a member, had stated that they felt like an increased weighting should be made for the local citizens, where any kind of disruption or any kind of new building would be allowed. And so I'm here to actually ask the council to create that increased weighting for the citizens of local affected areas to the building of City Hall. Of course, the issues that are most prevalent are the view issues, and it's the one thing that we really enjoy here at Newport Beach. And many citizens have great views, and certainly Harborview Hills does have great views. The view plane ordinance was passed in the seventies, and this ordinance was set forth to protect all the views. I believe when that ordinance was passed, and the spirit of that ordinance would be to continuously protect those views, not protect them just for individual citizens when they decide to build, or for any company that would decide to build, but also for any city structures that would be built there. And I urge you to stay consistent with that ordinance and the spirit of the ordinance. I always try to be a good neighbor. I'd like to be a good neighbor to a new City Hall that comes there, and I would urge the city to take the highest moral and ethical standards in being a good neighbor to the citizens that live close to the newly constructed City Hall destination. In view plane preservations, wanted to bring up a couple of things that I think that you should take a look at. And first of all, I'm very pleased that you want to protect the berm, and that that's part of the recommendations, and would like to consider that. Second, I would like you to consider any kind of things that would stick up from the new City Hall structure. Antennas, satellite dishes, that kind of thing. I can't imagine looking out at my view and seeing a satellite dish as my new element as part of my view. So I would really like you to consider some of those issues in there. The second area is really, in terms of views, is surrounding lighting. And I know there's been some comments in terms of lighting, but it was really prevalent to me this evening. When I looked out to the city view, I can see the beautiful bay and the harbor, and I could also see the glare of the light coming from the library building. I would hope that we wouldn't go down a path, that we continue to either increase that, but that we would mitigate that. I believe that lights should be placed or positioned so that it does not detract from the view at night. Skylights also may allow for, for beams of light which grow above the City Hall, particularly in evening functions. And lighting on paths should be subtle, or potentially the park should be closed in the evenings. I think all of these need to be assessed. One thing that did surprise me about the specifications that came up, that I neglected to add about the views, is that it did say that architectural differences or things that would be necessary for architectural design could come across the view plane, and I think that is morally and ethically incorrect. Lastly, I think parking needs to also be assessed with the lighting and the view ordinances. And I can't imagine looking again out at my view and seeing the glare of cars coming into park along the berm of, of MacArthur, and having that as part of my evening view in the evenings. One other aspect that I would like you to consider, as a neighbor that lives close by, and that is noise. There's a proposed amphitheater that's in that particular area, and I live close to Fashion Island, obviously, in terms of that. A lot of things I get to enjoy there, but something that's about three times as far away from me as the amphitheater was the Race for the Cure, most recently. Certainly a worthwhile cause, only happens once a year. But I can tell you, even with all my windows and doors shut, the blaring sound of the Race for the Cure awoke me before seven AM in the morning. And I would hope that that wouldn't be something that we continually be associated with as you build the park design. Lastly, I know that I, I cannot make, because of my business, things that I do, I cannot make it to all the committee meetings, but I would urge you, as a local citizen, and in order to weight the concerns of the local areas more closely, that you develop a working group with the local citizens, as well as the other people, so that you can see the concerns from our area. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate being able to come here to comment.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Karen Tringali from Corona del Mar. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the City Hall Design Committee. I mean, they've done a spectacular job, and I think as many of us here tonight have attended a number of the meetings, we certainly appreciate their willingness to listen to us night after night, and as Larry mentioned earlier, sometimes several times within an evening. I think that demonstrates a true willingness to have public participation in this process. I, I heard something tonight that was just a little concerning. I think that many of us have worked on projects that have phases attached to them, and occasionally, Phase Two and Phase Three projects do get completed, but generally speaking, those subsequent phases in some manner lag sort of the muster that the first phase does. I think that we also know that there are some economies that can be had by completing a project in its entirety, rather than through phases. The building committee and council made a great effort at putting together general design parameters, which were part of this project, and none of which, none, the least of which, was having City Hall in the park. And so, I would just would like to suggest that the park and the building structures be completed in a single phase and not be spread out over time for cost constraints or economies, because that really is the project and the parameters that was, that was set forth by, by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Selitch, and members of the city council. My name is Debbie Stevens. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar and Harborview Hills. After listening to a lot of architects lately, I've learned the word iconic, which is something I didn't really know about, but iconic design, iconic views from Avocado and that kind of stuff. I think the most iconic thing about the city is its relationship to the ocean, and the most iconic thing about the, the City Hall site is its, is its views of the ocean. So I think that one of the most important things that we can do here is to respect the view plane ordinance and to keep structures out of the view plane. Doing that also protects views from MacArthur and the views as we come down MacArthur, as well as the views from the private homes across the street. Avoiding light and glare impacts to the extent that we can is also very important. Retaining the berm along MacArthur really helps towards avoiding light and glare impacts, as well as protecting some of the views, so I'd encourage that the berm be protected. In whatever plan we choose, I think these are comments that can be made about whatever architect is involved or, or anything like that. These are kind of the deal breakers, as I see them. And finally, as Karen just mentioned, the park is an integral part of this project. This was, this was part of the vote as Measure B. It was City Hall in the park, and this was discussed a lot in the committee meetings, the design committee meetings, so I think it's very important that this be looked at as one project, and that phasing not be encouraged to occur. A couple of comments on just the Boland-Zawinski Plan. I think the design committee report does a really good job at, at describing what both the pros and the cons of this project would be, or this design would be. So I think that they did a really good job on that, and the concerns that were raised as part of the discussions, both from the, the design committee themselves, as well as the public are included, so I was very pleased to see that. One of the comments that they said is that on Boland-Zawinski, one of the greatest, one of the greatest assets is almost, is also one of the greatest liabilities, and that is this, this light airy structure that has a lot of windows and glass. That's, that's all nice, but that is going to create a lot of light and glare impacts that we, we, we need to have minimized somehow. I think that keeping the berm, which is what they did propose to do, does help with that. The sail going into the view plane ten feet is, is, is not acceptable. But when they gave their presentation at the September twenty-seventh meeting, they were asked about that by one of the committee members, and they said, and I think you can see it, lower it. It's not, it's not that hard to deal with. So I think that lowering, even if you, if you like the sail, lower it, and I think that would be fine. In the Boland-Zawinski Plan, the park design is very weak, and I think that probably needs to be worked on the most. It's, it's more or less expanded wetlands, and I don't, I don't see the point in doing that. So with that, I think the best design for City Hall is going to be, as I think you've heard here, a selection of some of the best components from each plan. The, the design committee was unwilling to do that, but clearly, the city council can do that, so that's what I would suggest. I would suggest that the Johnson Fain plan be looked at in a little bit more detail, because it was, there was two really good, or I should say, there's two designs that really had the City Hall in a park feel. Johnson Fain was clearly one of them, Rosetti was another. I understand the confusion with Rosetti making it a difficult plan to support, but I think that Johnson Fain should be looked at a little bit more seriously because of its overall City Hall in the park feel. I'd also like to say that there was one really strong landscape architect amongst, amongst the, the designs, and that was the one that was part of the Rosetti Plan called S W A. And it had great ideas already, and the types of materials that could be used, and, and a very strong presence in the park, and I'd like that they be considered for the landscape architect. Finally, I was just going to ask, I know that there are, that you're planning on pulling a couple of the architects from the design committee into the building committee. I'd like to see the landscape architect included as part of that, Mr. Bowden. I don't know if he's even interested, but that would help keep that, that park as part of a, the project and still be a strong presence with this overall City Hall issue, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I'm afraid I'm not going to be very popular, especially with Harborview Hills. My first question is, is the city has taken a public statement very hard that the only site views are only, are private views. I mean, no, no, there are no private views, only public views. You've done that even in the last few moments of the last couple, when you looked at the view plane down the gully in Corona del Mar, and the fellow had a, a house on one side, and you had to stand in a street to even see that, you couldn't see it anywhere else. But basically, the neighbors said, they couldn't say that they had a view plane that they wanted to protect. wanted to protect, because they were told that there was no private view planes. Now, this happened already once before in my existence here in Corona del Mar. And that happened with city trees. The city trees, Corona del Mar has a slope all the way to the ocean. And so each person, when the house was built to the right height, had a view of the ocean over his house. Now, I happen to have a theater in the way, so I can't see over my theater. Nevertheless, everybody had this view, and it's sort of, it's a beautiful view. But they lost it. And they lost it predominantly due to city trees. And some of these city trees were declared, you know, they couldn't be, boy, even though they went 50 feet high and they were affecting the subdivision above it, they were still considered, couldn't touch them. All those along Poppy are the same way. And so the people made a choice, and they said, "Well, we like trees too, so we'll give it up. We won't fight it all the time." But many of the roads in Corona del Mar, you can look down that street, and in fact, there are now, I think, three or four streets between Coast Highway and the ocean where there are no more street, I mean, no more street trees between Bayside and the beach. And those have a view. And you can verify that, Nancy. Okay, next thing I'd like to come up. This particular subdivision is a fairly small subdivision. It's not a large subdivision. They're asking that the street trees in Irvine Terrace even be trimmed. Okay, so I'm basically, now, if you look down to the ocean from up there on their streets, you can't see very good when you look right straight down to the ocean. And the reason is, is there's a 240-foot sight plane for pretty far down into Corona del Mar, old Corona del Mar, that basically wipes out their view. So they, or at least the bottom part of their view, so they don't see as much ocean. Their view is only over this MacArthur area, and it's only over that area that the Irvine Company talked about. Now, I'm not trying to break that, but I would point out that there are some limitations to it. A shopping center was put in at the bottom. And that was discussed very heavily when it was put in. But the buildings are viewable from up above. All the buildings are viewable. The parking lot is viewable. All the buildings across the street are viewable. And that intersection at Avocado and Coast Highway has about 180-foot sight plane. That's almost 60 feet different than if you went up there on the opposite side of Newport Bridge, I mean Newport, just a minute, I wrote it down, because I was going to forget the damn thing. Harborview Hills Road. Okay, next, the berm along MacArthur. The berm along MacArthur completely ruins all kinds of beautiful, unbelievable views of all the public coming down MacArthur. Forty thousand cars a day, not 16 or 18 homes. That berm, anytime you get over the first hill, it just opens up everything. You've got 180-degree view. You come down about a block and a half, and bam, you start to go underneath that berm, and it wipes out the view except right straight down MacArthur. Now, that's ridiculous.
Dick, you probably missed the red light flashing, but could you wrap up, please?
Yes, I will. The view toward the beach, I mentioned, buildings now seen, the parking lot, okay, and I've mentioned Harborview Drive. So I think I've got most of it. I would just ask that it's one thing to protect the view plane. It's another thing to enhance it every time it comes up. And that's what we're seeing here. They enhanced it, and they also enhanced the ability to control traffic on MacArthur Boulevard. So now you can only have four lanes in their area, and that's all, and it can't run full because there's a traffic light that prevents it. So you're now restricting how you build the roads. Now, they don't want to allow that to happen in Corona del Mar on PCH. No, no, that doesn't.
Dick, can you wrap it up, please?
It's not allowed at all to talk about, only here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next speaker, please.
My name's Jim Warren, and I live at 1201 Surfline Way in Corona del Mar. And going into all of this project that we're talking about before the election and everything, we knew a key factor in all this would be the cost of the dirt removal. In fact, I spoke to City Council about that prior, after talking to an engineer that built MacArthur and lowered MacArthur Boulevard. And he felt at that time that the expense of the dirt removal was going to be fantastic, very costly. But anyhow, we've gotten into this project, and for one firm to kind of play that lightly and guess at $3 million or something like that, that might be a real light estimate. And one of the reasons that most of us in our neighborhood kind of fell in love with this, well, not fell in love with it, but accepted this Johnson-Fain, is that it was the least interruptive. In other words, it was placed right by the library, and the smallest amount of total dirt construction would be minimized. And the park fit into a real nice natural situation. And we attended most of these meetings, and we agreed entirely with Rush Hill. And we thought he was very familiar with the pollution of the light, the pollution of the noise, the removal of the dirt, and things of that nature. So I guess that that's why, once again, Johnson-Fain remained right at the top for us. And the architects did a fantastic job, and I learned a lot about how they were planning on, you know, different problems that were occurring, or how they could do this, or how they could do that. But once again, I want to reemphasize the fact that it's going to be a big, big project as far as the dirt removal goes. And I think this is something that they should all include in their cost of their construction. And they haven't done it to that point. And I think Mr. Hen is exactly right, that we need more information at this time. And we really don't have a deadline to get this thing done. It doesn't have to be done next year. It doesn't have to be done the year after. But I think it needs to be done correctly with the right figures. And thank you very much. We've appreciated the process.
Thank you.
Your Honor, members of the Council. My name is Hugh Logan. I live in Newport Beach. I too am concerned about the cost, but I recall, I believe, that when Gonzalez-Gudall were presenting, and they were getting questioned by the architects, and quite properly, that presenter said, "At this point in the program, you really can't tell the cost within better than about 25 percent." So I suspect that we really don't have a good handle on what the cost is. Recognizing that the Council will be choosing an architectural firm rather than a complete design, I would like to have some emphasis given to retaining the view knoll for the people. This is our city. And I also would like to see the building and the landscape, that is, the City Hall and the park, executed together. I think that's important. I can just about feel the daggers coming from behind, because I'm no architect, but I have to say that my opinion is that Johnson-Fain represented, in their design presented, the best integration of landscape and building elements. And I think more reflects the concept of City Hall in the park, which is what we all voted on. So this was, after all, a park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jan Van Der Sluit from Newport Heights. I attended most all of the meetings. I think I missed one. And I would like to commend Larry Tucker and the five architects. I think they just spent an incredible amount of time. They discuss things in detail. I just can't imagine how much homework they had to do, and I think they made some very reasoned opinions. I do like the Bowlin-Zawinski plan. I think it has the, one of the better park plans. I like the fact that it has a fairly light footprint on the land, and I think it does integrate the park and the City Hall. It is perhaps the most flamboyant plan. I mean, it has some iconic, they call it iconic features, that I think were attractive to the architects. And I think that's one of the main reasons that this particular architect was chosen. I also like the Johnson-Fain plan. I think Johnson-Fain, in a way, best integrated what the voters voted for in Measure B, and that was City Hall in the park. I thought the Johnson-Fain plan was the most similar to the Bill Ficker plan. And in a lot of ways, I like the Bill Ficker plan than any of these plans. And I think that you might consider asking Bill Ficker to get involved, because he, his plan, the buildings only took up three acres of the property, and then the rest of it was parked. So if he has some ideas to how to minimize the impact of the buildings on the park, then we ought to bring Bill Ficker into the mix. But I think that his, I think that Johnson-Fain was the closest to that particular plan. And so that, in fact, was probably my favorite plan, with the Bowlin-Zawinski-Jackson plan, the second one. The plan that I disliked the most was the LPA plan. That was, that actually got the same number of votes as the Bowlin-Zawinski-Jackson plan, but none of, that wasn't chosen as first place by any of them. But the LPA plan was the plan that did the most grading. They seemed, they graded the whole site. And then they put this big building all along Avocado. Avocado will be totally taken up by a building with the LPA plan. The LPA plan, everybody who drives into City Hall is going to have to drive from Farallon all the way to the back of the property near the berm and circle around in the parking garage, and then come down underneath to access City Hall. Everybody who comes to City Hall is going to have to make that maneuver. They also had a very ludicrous tide pool plan for the park, which I don't know where they got that idea from, but the tide is far away at the ocean. So there just seemed to be a basic naivete or something there that they weren't considering. So even though LPA came in second, I think that that one I would disregard. And I would say that there were four plans, basically, that were very close to each other. And along with, I can understand why the architects would choose this plan, because this is, the Bowlin-Zawinski plan is a very modern futuristic plan. I don't know how well a wave form for the roof, I don't know if that would stand the test of time. I don't know of other properties in the city or anywhere else that has that kind of wave form for a roof. I do know that when this particular building was being considered for redevelopment, the way that, I think they tried to include a wave form as part of the shape of the roof, and people started calling that ugly. So I don't know whether that actually is good criteria. But I would also repeat other people's, other speakers tonight who want, like Hugh Logan wants to retain the view knoll on the property, which is just south of the extension of Farallon. And I would sincerely ask that you retain that knoll, the high point, so that the public will be able to keep the same views of the ocean and the harbor that they have today. So again, my particular choice would be Johnson-Fain, but I can perfectly understand if you choose the Bowlin-Zawinski plan.
Thank you.
My name's Barry Allen. I live in Corona del Mar. And what I'm going to say is going to sound like many of the other speakers tonight, because so many of us did attend many of the Design Committee meetings and reviewed the plans and reviewed the minutes on the plans we didn't attend, is that in the Rosetti plan, they had S.W.A. landscaping, and frankly, his reputation and also the park design that he came up with was excellent. And I would like that to be selected. And then Johnson-Fain, I think, has the best plan for the City Hall. Admittedly, it has underground parking, and that's going to make it expensive. And maybe you can put some of it underground and some of it above ground. I know that some people made suggestions that some parking be above ground, and that makes sense for people who want to be there for a very short period of time. But also, the underground parking will do exactly what this particular space was supposed to be, a park. And remember, it's City Hall in the park. And you see, I know that because we had a City Hall design competition, and because we had a lot of architects looking at it who are building buildings, you know, we're starting to concentrate on the building itself, and I think we should concentrate on the park. And so my feeling is the same as other speakers tonight have said, is that I don't want this to be on track one and track two. I think it should be on the same track. The City Hall and the park should both be built. And I think because of the importance of the park, we should require whichever one of the architects you select to pick the best park designer, and the best park design of any of the plans, and that was S.W.A. landscaping, clearly. And I think Johnson-Fain has a good track record. They've got a good-looking building, a good plan, and I think they're probably the best The good thing about underground parking is it makes more room for the park. And of course, that's one of the things that many of us favor. And that does make it more expensive, because you've got to dig up some ground and put underground parking under some of the buildings. Also, the berm along the north, along MacArthur, I think is an excellent idea to keep in place for two reasons. Number one, I completely disagree with Mr. Nichols about the view coming down MacArthur. The berm doesn't block the view. The berm just focuses the view for, before the berm, you see one view, and you come down, and it focuses the view. As you continue down, and you can look over those buildings as you go down MacArthur. And the berm being there would help greatly in the light, in the light and glare issue that's very significant, and has been considered by the City Council and made part of the design plan. I think the green roof would be an interesting idea. I'm looking at Don Webb as I say this, because I went on the website and saw a lot of those green roofs, that most of them were in Germany, it seemed like to me, or in Europe. There didn't seem to be many in this country. There were some in Chicago. But some of those green roofs, we have to remember, you can't walk on them, because you walk on them, because they're all in, you buy the sections, like this size, like 36 inches by 36 inches. So they're kind of expensive to maintain. But you're going to save money over the period of time if you put one of those green roofs in. I've been convinced of this by reading the literature that's on the web. You're going to save money over what you're going to get with Bowlin-Zawinski, because that's a bunch of glass. And guess what happens? You've got to heat it, and you've got to cool it. It's going to be very expensive. It's not a green building at all. So we want to concentrate on building height. I think that's very significant, to preserve the view plane. Light mitigation from light and glare, I think that's also something that's very important. And I know that the Architectural Committee, and by the way, all of us really appreciate all the time they spend. Here are these professional people giving all this time. I had to go through 51 plans to start with, and then try and get it down to five. And then you've seen the level of their review of the plans by talking about each one of them, what the good and bad was. Some of the people even weighting the different portions of the plan. I'm just amazed at the amount of time they spent, just absolutely amazed. Also, Mr. Van Der Sluit mentioned something that was in my notes, and this was added, one of the added items, I think, because I'm not so sure it was in there, was the one about, if possible, retain the high point of the southernmost Meadow area to maintain the ocean view. That's the area, if you go out there, if you stand there, you could, it's probably the highest part, really, of the entire area out there. We were thinking if you could protect that as a grassy knoll, that would give the public who's out there, they can really walk up there and see a great view, even with a building in front of them and the library in front of them, because otherwise, maybe the views might be blocked in some areas. And I think that covers all the points I want to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. I have obviously not attended as many meetings as others here, but I just happened to see the daily pilot picture the other day, and it concerned me enough that I thought I better learn a little bit about this. And what concerned me about it was that sail, which to me is kind of a gimmicky thing, which I personally don't like, but maybe I would like it better if I could see the model, which I have not done yet. There are a couple of things I just wanted to add, is that in looking at the Channel Three, two-hour version of the, that long day that you had, I rather liked the park plan that goes with this one, because it had a lot of native plants, and the person who was describing the landscaping seemed very knowledgeable about what would work where, and I like that particularly. And probably the color and flowers and things would be closer to the actual building. And the other big concern I have is that this, we give lots of credit to and look at which is the better green building, and I'll look to my friend Nancy Gardner for that, she'll be keeping an eye on that for us. I do think that's very important, that we have that kind of display for the citizens to see what we can do in the way of energy conservation and other, and water conservation and other things, too. Earlier, somebody said we aren't, I guess it was Mr. Tucker, that said they weren't evaluating it based on the attractiveness of a building, but I do think that's important. As far as that is concerned, what little I have looked at, I thought the LPA building looked to me like the nicest ones, although I do have to say this intrigues me, other than that white sail. Possibly the city council chambers that that's supposed to be next to in itself could be a nice-looking building, I just can't see it because of that white sail. That's my comments for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Before he goes, I have a question. I remember from our long day, that Johnson-Fain with the green roof, that was, I think, intrigued a lot of people, but I didn't get any sense of what the building looked like. Did you get any more detail on that?
As all of you know, I spent two terms on the Planning Commission, and one of the interesting things when you serve in that capacity, in the same capacity as you serve in, is when land use decisions are made, if you sit there for long enough or live for long enough afterwards, you get to see things that get built that you had a hand in deciding upon. And when I was on the Planning Commission, and the city attorney used to lecture me a little bit, because I tend to get, drift into, well, what's it going to look like when we really didn't have a design review portfolio that wasn't really allowed under the old codes? I guess the new general plan's a little bit different on that. But one of the things that I look back on now and regret as a vote was the Mormon temple and, in particular, the spire on that temple, which was a very elegant spire that fit beautifully with the building. But the neighbors had this vision that this thing was going to kind of like wreck their part of the world. And ultimately, the spire got reduced in height, and because it got reduced in height, it got increased in width, so it fit with the architecture, instead of being a tall, slender, elegant spire, it ended up being a stubbier feature. Now, they did a gorgeous job with really everything that they did, it came out beautifully, in my opinion. Except for when I drive by it, I always say, geez, that would look better with that original spire. And that all came about because neighbors, in my opinion, were probably more concerned than they should have been, it's a fear of the unknown, and also an inability of most people to look at a set of plans and actually be able to see from the plans what's going to be on the ground when it's built. So you're going to be under a fair amount of pressure, I'm sure, over this aspect, or that aspect, or the other aspect, but I just wanted to relate to you my opinions about, you know, letting designers design and to, don't try to micromanage the process, that would be my recommendation to you. Let them do what they do best, you'll come out with a better facility and something that's nicer looking, because it is the City Hall for really all of the city, it just isn't the people that are right next to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had one other quick question. The Johnson-Fain design, my recollection is, it really, the City Hall really isn't or wouldn't be very visible from Avocado. Is that the sense of the committee?
Yes, I think that's fairly accurate, I mean, somewhat visible. It was a little hard to tell, because they focused their efforts on the park, and the City Hall part of it was a little tougher to tell.
The building was set down, and there was a bit of a, almost a berm in front of it from Avocado that kind of blocked the view of what the building would be, so it didn't have much street presence.
It was probably the least visible of the buildings, I guess I could say.
Okay, well, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank the City Hall Design Committee for all your hard work. I think by the comments that were made this evening, you can see that it was appreciated by the community as well as the city council, and I'm assuming our S-19 is going to get approved tonight, so we look forward to continue working with you over the next year on this So with that, I think that's a receive-and-file report from the City Hall Design Committee. The action this evening, and I'll entertain a motion as such, would be to approve the recommendation to adopting the resolution, amending Resolution 2008-14 relating to the City Hall Design Committee, and continuing Part Two of the recommendation to designate the committee members to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, is there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we're adjourned.